Well, there we are. Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the July 12, 2021 Davie County Commissioners Meeting to Order. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. We thank you for your sovereignty that's placed us in this freest of all lands. And, Father, we thank you for placing in the hearts of men and women acts of service to fight on battlefields that we might be free today. We thank you for men and women that serve in our fire departments, our law enforcement. Father, our EMS, our schools that make our great county safe. And, Father, educate our children and make this a great place to raise a family. But, Lord, may we always understand that true wisdom, true liberty only comes through the wisdom that comes from Christ Jesus. And so, Father, tonight, we pray for wisdom, discernment, boldness, and understanding to carry out the mission that you have given us to make this place, this great county, a wonderful place to live. So, Lord, we thank you. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Do we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Got a good number with us. We appreciate that. We will be, just a housekeeping order, for roll call purposes, Mr. Poindexter will not be with us tonight, so it will just be the four of us. So, before we adopt the agenda, I would ask Mr. Vogler to go over the conflict policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest respecting any matter on the proposed agenda, which will come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know this time before the agenda is adopted. Seeing no one speak up, I would conclude there's no actual, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, that is approved. All right. Next, we go to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, we have one individual who has signed up, and I will be timing that individual for the three minutes that individual has. It's Julie Whitaker on mental health recommendations. Ms. Whitaker, if you'll come forward to the podium, state your full name for the record, and then you may proceed.
Julie C. Whitaker. Thank you. Good evening, all. After your decision to realign with another LME MCO to serve the public mental health care needs of Davie Countyans, I am here to offer some recommendations to you regarding future involvement. As you know, LME MCOs are mandated and to form and support consumer and family advisory committees with responsibility to meet six statutory requirements and advise the LME MCO Board of Directors. As the board empowered to make decisions on behalf of the citizens in a county regarding the LME MCO, you need both advisories and collaborators to help inform you consistently. The system users need a local body to convey their concerns regarding LME MCO and departments within the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services charged with serving them. Clearly, consumer voices are not attended to as well as commissioner voices. Rhett Melton, Partners CEO, made an important statement to you. I paraphrase. "We were intentional when selecting the name of our agency, Partners. We want to partner with you to serve the most vulnerable population in your county. I encourage you to be their partners." During your deliberations on the 29th, Mr. Jones, you asked a very important question. How are we going to monitor the effectiveness of partners as we move forward? I recommend you develop your own conduit of communication from stakeholders to learn how the LME MCO serves their needs. Establish the following two committees or boards with connections to the Consolidated Human Services Board and law enforcement and justice systems as needed. The two committees I recommend, one focuses on mental illness and substance use disorders, the other focuses on intellectual differences and traumatic brain injury. Both categories are populations that may use public services managed by the LME MCO, and they need services from which community supports are not provided via private insurance companies. The committee should include system users and supporting family members, county agency or department leaders, and representatives from your public service agencies and nonprofits providing support services. I offer you this short list of questions to be considered regularly. How many persons are served by the LME MCO in each disability category? How many persons could be being served but are not, and what are their barriers to services? How many residents are on the Innovations waiver registry of unmet needs? How many grievances are filed with the LME LMCO, and how many of those are resolved satisfactorily? How many people need supported housing in Davie, and how many beds are available, in use, and needed? And how can transportation deficits for this population be addressed? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's the only one who signed up tonight.
All right. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the President, the Fire Association presentation, and I will call on Mr. Byrd.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll provide a few comments. Just as a reminder, you know, the adopted fiscal year 2021-22 budget included dedication of one and three-quarters cents on the tax rate, or $903,000, to the fire and rescue funding expansion. The board approved the budget, obviously, five to zero. There were several options for this $903,000. The methodology for distributing these funds was not included in the budget ordinance. However, at that June meeting, the board approved the motion to conduct an informal work session to discuss the allocation for the fire funding. In preparation for that called meeting, staff reached out to Brian Spock, the Fire Association President, and staff suggested that it might be helpful for the Fire Association to come up with a funding distribution option that was agreeable to all departments. And Mr. Brian Spock is here to present tonight.
Great. Mr. Spock?
Thank you all for having me tonight. I'd also like to thank you all again for the opportunity to work through this plan for the allocation of the $903,000. I'd also like to thank all the chiefs and the fire service personnel who were in the meeting room that night. We worked toward a, you know, a pretty good proposal and got a unanimous agreement with all 16 stakeholders. It had its challenges, but we did get it done. The proposal addressed funding for our out-of-county departments, Lone Hickory, Scotch Irish, and Courtney Fire Departments. It got them to a new funding level based on their home county tax rate. It also was able to raise the base for the nine of the in-county departments up to $212,111. And it also provided an additional $35,380 for the largest three departments. And they also will get their additional growth as an additional funding increase. That's an annual increase. This is a step in the right direction. We all have worked really hard on this, and it's not the last step. We need to improve our fire service. It's been about 15 years since the base departments were able to get a funding raise, so this is a long time coming for a lot of the departments. I'd like to encourage you all to help work with us and keep going and trying to push for a more permanent solution. We need a better mechanism so that we don't have to go another 15 years before our base departments get funding. There are a lot of capital needs coming up, stations, trucks, equipment, and our countywide ISO scores are due back. And I think that'd be a good time for us to look at some of those scores and look at the equipment needs and see where the money can make the most impact. So, just like to appreciate again for all y'all's help and working through this plan and all the fire service personnel that helped work that out. So, if y'all have any questions.
When do you expect those scores back?
The two of the departments were graded at the last week of April. The rest of them were about two weeks later, the second week of May, and they told us about 60 to 90 days. So, we're starting to get in that 60 to 90-day range where we should see something.
So, Commissioners, first of all, just want to, you know, thank the association and Brian and all the leaders there for coming together. It's great to have consensus on a funding scenario. Just want to also let you know that, you know, staff looked at the numbers that they came up with. You know, when you're developing numbers on the fly like they did, I mean, there's always, you know, some slight differences in calculations, very minor, but we want to acknowledge, you know, and utilize the full $903,000. So, staff reviewed the numbers, and there was a little bit of money left over, and basically we just, the numbers that you have for consideration include distributing the rest of those out just evenly to each department. So, do you have any questions?
Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Spock or Mr. Bone?
Brian, I would just like to say, because I get to witness what you all do a little more than everyone else, but I want to thank you so much for what you have done for the Fire Association for the past couple of years because you have spent a lot of time, and I'm sure your family would rather you be at home. But it was, it was great to have a unanimous decision. And like you said, this is just a beginning because even though this is a great raise for you all, with the price of everything else going up, it's really just one step in the right direction. So, hopefully, we'll continue to move forward. But I just wanted to thank you so much for all the extra effort that you put forth and the whole board, but the, we kind of put the heat on you, so.
Any other comments or questions? I would just say, I know it was tough, but I do appreciate y'all coming to an agreement such as it is. So, I was, I was excited to hear that. So, all right. So, I do want to take formal action on this to ratify the recommendation. So, but Davi-
Mr. Chairman, if it would please the board, you know, staff would suggest you, in the motion, clarify that it would be the distribution as delineated by staff.
All right. So, would someone like to make the motion to approve the recommended allocation as presented?
I will make that motion gladly.
And would you be willing to incorporate the new numbers as presented by staff into that?
The new numbers presented by staff.
And Mr. Spock, we had communication on that, and he was in agreement with that.
Okay. Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you. Right. Next, we move to a public hearing on a rezoning matter, and I will ask Mr. Medwell to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you know it, you have zoning map amendment 2021-05. This is a request by Block House Properties LLC to rezone 6.6 acres of land from residential 20 and residential agricultural to general industrial. The subject piece of property is located at 1765 Peoples Creek Road and is further described as Davie County Tax Map G8120B302. Included in your agenda package, you'll see several maps, one of those being a zoning map, which we have outlined the 6.8 acres to be rezoned. I will show that, bring to your attention that there's an existing structure already on site that currently is zoned, GI. That was done in 1986. Also, in your package, you'll see an aerial photograph of the property. You do see how there is an existing structure on this 6.8 acres. This will all be included in the new proposed zoning classification of GI. The subject piece of property is listed on the comprehensive plan as a commercial mixed-use area. It's listed as a rural growth area on the growth enhancement strategy. As I mentioned, the two-acre tract was zoned to I-2, now GI, in 1986. The proposed zoning, the GI, this is the general industrial district. It's established for manufacturing, distribution, warehousing, processing, and related uses whose operating characteristics limit their effects on adjacent uses. Public water is adjacent to the site. Issues to consider, this does come to the board as a general use rezoning, so all those uses that are allowed or permitted by right in that GI should be considered for this subject piece of property. The planning board did hear this at its April 27th meeting and did make a recommendation to approve by a vote of seven in favor and none opposed. Staff would ask the board tonight to consider one of the following actions. One, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve. Two, a move that the following statement be adopted in a motion to deny. Or, three, defer the request for additional consideration. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, and if the board has any other questions for me, I'll be more than glad to try to answer those now.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Medwell at the moment? All right. So, this is a public hearing, so I will ask Mr. Vogler to share with us the rules of engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chairman has announced, this is the date and hour, the public hearing presented Chapter 153A in the North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance. This board is conducting a public hearing on proposed amendment to the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning ordinance, upon application of Block House Properties LLC for the rezoning approximately 6.68 acres from residential 20 and residential agricultural to general industrial. Said property being located at 1765 Peoples Creek Road, advanced North Carolina, described as Davie County Tax Map parcel G8120B302. Do you notice this public hearing was advertised and ran in the local newspaper of general circulation of the county on July 1, 2021, and July 8, 2021, as required by law, as noted in your agenda packet? I would ask for all those who wish to come to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing and to provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right. At this time, we'll declare the public comment period closed and turn it back over to the board for discussion and/or action. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to preclude any discussion, but I will make a motion to approve.
And I would second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to approve the rezoning as presented, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you. All right. Next, we move to the consent agenda. I don't know if there anybody, any questions. There was, I would ask Sheriff Hartman if he would like to come up and make some comments.
I'd just say that I, again, appreciate you working with me to present service weapons to folks. Tonight, you have two on your consent agenda. One is a retirement. That is an unfortunate retirement. It's a disability retirement, but it is a retirement, and it's our custom to present their service weapon on retirement. So, the second one is even more unfortunate. Deputy Brown, as you know, died unexpectedly two weeks ago. His wife asked me at the funeral if there was a way to get his service weapon because he had collected every service weapon that he'd ever carried while he was on duty. So, I greatly appreciate y'all allowing me to present the weapon to the family. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions about the consent agenda as presented?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. The consent agenda is approved. All right. Next, we move to the county manager's report. Mr. Bone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, want to acknowledge a lot of the great work that we've had in regards to managing the COVID pandemic, but unfortunately, we are starting to see numbers head in the wrong direction. The number of active cases went from nine just a week ago to 24 on July 9. As of July 5, Davie County went from a green county to a light yellow county. So, the green county was the highest designation in the state's system, the highest and best, but we have gone down to a light yellow, which means we have moderate community spread. This is for data that was from June 20 to July 3, and my understanding from Suzanne is, you know, our positive testing rate has actually gone up since then as well. So, we're continuing to move in the, in the wrong direction. Hopefully, that can, is just a short little blip. Currently, there are 19 green counties, 50 light yellow counties, 29 yellow counties, one orange county, and one red county. So, we're still, you know, doing quite well compared to our peers, but we want to be back in the green. According to the COVID-19 dashboard with the state as of today, 45% of the population in Davie County has received at least a first vaccine. 43% of the population is fully vaccinated. That's really on par with the entire state. The state has averages of 46 for fully vaccinated and 43 for, excuse me, 46 for partially vaccinated and 43 for full vaccinations. I mean, we're, you know, when you look around us in the region, we're doing quite well with a lot of our peers. We just want those percentages to continue to rise. To that end, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services is urging all unvaccinated North Carolinians to get a COVID-19 vaccine as cases, hospitalizations, and deaths have been inching up across the state. North Carolina's early warning systems are showing more people going to the emergency department with COVID-like illnesses and elevated viral levels in wastewater in certain regions of the state. At this time, the more infectious and potentially more dangerous Delta variant is rapidly spreading across the state and across the country. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention classify the Delta variant as a variant of concern because it spreads faster than the current COVID-19 variants, and early studies have also shown a possible increased risk of hospitalization in people infected with the Delta variant. Since May, more than 99% of the new cases in North Carolina have incurred, have occurred in people who are not fully vaccinated. So, it's extremely important for people to get vaccinated. Our Health and Human Services Department have done a tremendous job getting shots in arms. They have several methodologies available for folks to get vaccinated. Walk-in vaccinations are available at the Health Department. Additionally, vaccinations are also available by appointment by calling 336-753-6779. On June 1, it was announced that Cardinal Innovations and Vaya Health will be consolidating by July 1 of 2022. A resolution was adopted unanimously by this board on June 2 directing staff to begin the process of disengagement from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare, our current LME MCO. As you're aware, the Board of Commissioners met on the 29th of June and voted unanimously to realign with Partners Health Management, consistent with state statutes and regulations. Dr. Mandy Cohen, Secretary of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and others with the state have been notified of this decision. The disengagement with Cardinal and alignment with Partners ultimately has to be approved by Secretary Cohen. Staff plans to have a disengagement plan ready for the board's consideration at the August 2 Board of Commissioners meeting. If the draft plan is approved by this board on August 2, the plan will be posted to our website, and Davie County will seek public comment on the plan for 60 days. Following this public comment period, the county will post all responses on the website for additional 30 days. Davie County will take into consideration feedback received and will review all written plans, and will submit a written request to disengage to the secretary for her approval. As we work through this transition, Davie County remains committed to facilitating and providing appropriate services for our residents. We will continue to work with Cardinal Innovations and Vaya in a professional and appropriate manner, which is in the best interest of our organization and the residents of our county. As of July 1, Davie County's Technologies Solutions Department is providing full technology support to the town of Moxville. Final preparations by staff took place from mid-June, leading up to the cut over on July 1. County staff looks forward to providing more services and continuing to work with the town of Moxville. 911 Communications is nearing completion of Phase 1 of a four-phase project for emergency police dispatch protocols. Since 2000, our Davie County 911 has utilized emergency medical dispatch protocols for medical-related emergencies. This has proven to be a tremendous asset for our citizens. It enables 911 telecommunicators to provide immediate first aid instructions to callers while EMS is responding. Emergency police dispatch protocols and emergency fire protocols will go in hand-in-hand with the, with the same benefits. Emergency police dispatch protocols will provide an established, an establishment of a unified standard for each caller, a safe prioritization of responses, and quality improvement measures. And then once emergency police dispatch is done, then we're going to proceed with emergency fire dispatch as well. The go-live date for emergency police dispatch protocols is set for September 28. A contract has been signed with Fountain Works, some consultants in Raleigh, to design and conduct a public engagement process regarding Davie County strategic priorities. This was something that we discussed in the budget work session, as well as it was included in the budget for this, this current year. The plans include a combination of in-person and virtual events to engage the community. In September, an in-person open house is tentatively planned where residents and other stakeholders can provide input on Davie County's priorities. Following the open house, multiple focus groups will be held virtually in October with target audiences and key stakeholders. Fountain Works will collect data in different formats to allow for both quantitative and qualitative results. The firm will analyze focus group and community conservation, conversation reports, and compile data from all stakeholders. Fountain Works will prepare a summary report based on the input from the survey and focus groups. The written document will include information about overall input across all groups, as well as highlight any special needs or differing input between the different types of stakeholders. Involving the community is crucial to continually updating and refining our county's strategic goals and budget priorities, and this community engagement process will assist the county with this goal. So, again, I applaud the board for its support of this initiative. July is National Parks and Recreation Month. This year's theme for Parks and Recreation Month is "Our Park: Our Recreation Story", and we encourage the public to highlight the stories of how our Davie community is stronger, more vibrant, and more resilient because of recreation and parks. We ask the public to share their recreation and park stories on social media using the hashtag #OurParkAndRecStory. Davie County Recreation and Parks now has a new mobile rec unit made possible by Davie Community Foundation. We certainly appreciate the foundation support of this initiative. We have a number of free mobile rec days coming- We have a number of free mobile rec days coming up soon. Just ask the public to check our website and social media for more information. We have a summer concert series event coming up on Saturday, August 14, at Davie County Community Park at 6:30, that, which includes the Ace Party Band. We have a number of summer specialty camps coming up. Just check out the Davie County Recreation and Parks website for more information. Commissioners, in regards to the Land and Water Conservation Fund, or LWCF, baseball complex leased by Davie County Little League. County staff recently met with federal and state agencies in regards to the LWCF grant, which originally was $120,000 and dates back to 1985. The LWCF status can be transferred to another property. However, this process takes at least one, one year and cannot involve an existing park or a property that is included in a master plan. So therefore, our options with, with the current property are, in regards to the LWCF status, are pretty limited. So in regards to requests for funding from the Davie County Little League for, for new light poles, it was previously suggested by a commissioner that the county may encourage the organization to apply for funding from the Davie County Recs and Park Grant Program. Additionally, the board may consider funding through an amendment to the budget if desired. And furthermore, the county could help Davie County Little League seek grant funding for the project as well. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bone? All right. Thank you for that. Thank you, depth report. Okay. Moving along, do we have any old business to come before the board this evening? Seeing none, do we have any new business to come before us this evening? All right. Moving right along. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Jones.
We're going in closed session.
We are.
Okay. All right. Well, I just thank everyone for coming then. We appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work that, everything we've talked about, though it's been briefed tonight, a lot of work has gone into this. And so I just thank each of you for making Davie County a better place to live. Thanks for coming.
Commissioner Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a shout out to Kelly Funderburke in the Register of Deeds office for all of the new things that she has brought with her and, and her staff are working on to establish and just improve that office to be even better than it already was. And I want to piggyback a little bit on what Julie Whitaker had to say, and also with the community involvement, um, strategic planning that we have coming up. I think that that is very essential for us to do what's best for our citizens and for the county, is to get as many opinions and, and feedback from people that are actually receiving services or needing services, or even just have ideas of things that we could do better, because the more ideas we can feed on, the better. Regarding the fire funding, of course, I'm so glad to be able to, for these base departments to be able to get a larger check to serve the citizens. I personally have both been praised and criticized for my passion about fire service, but I do have a great passion for fire service. I was told several years ago by somebody who, who I won't mention because I didn't ask permission, at a fundraiser, the statement was made to me that there are not many people left in this world who do things for nothing. And that is very true, and that is why I have such a passion for fire service, because our base departments do it for nothing. All of our fire departments are awesome, but these base guys that have been operating on, and girls, that have been operating on 136 for all these years, I don't even know why they do it. But they do it because they love their communities, and in return, we need to love them back, and we need to all work together to take care of them. We talk about with emergency services at EMS, consistency of care. Maintaining these smaller fire departments provides consistency of care and consistency of protection for all citizens. And it doesn't matter what district we live in, what tax base is generated by that district. Every citizen in this county deserves equal protection and care, and that is why I am so passionate about it. So this is a great day for me, and I thank each and every one of you for all that you do, for all the many hours you spent training, for the Saturday mornings that you get up while everybody else is shopping and partying, you're training and working, all the water hall work that you did, Association and Rodney putting together all of that water hall work. That was huge, huge work. And if you all will continue to work together like you did then, I just see nothing but even better things coming for Davie County Fire. But I appreciate each and every one of you, and I appreciate the board for supporting your decision that you reached that night.
Blakely?
It's always good to go behind Benita. She covers all my bases. Again, thanks for coming out tonight. I'm really pleased to see some resolution for all you guys and gals. And I know, I know you've been fighting the fight for a long time. And, and again, it's good for us to be able to, to pass along something to you, but I made a statement at our last meeting that this is not the, not the only thing that's coming. I would like to see all of you continue to work together and help us find a, another funding mechanism that would give you more of your capital needs, your stations, et cetera. This is only the beginning. And again, it only works if we all work together. And, and you guys working, you guys and gals working together and telling us what you need is the only way that it's going to happen. Thank you.
Appreciate everyone coming out. I would echo the fire service as far as continuing to work together. This is step one and step in the right direction, but it's, this is a marathon, not a sprint. So we need to continue to work, and we'll look forward to hearing further recommendations from you folks as we move along. Again, appreciate that. So at this time, next item on the agenda is a closed session, and I have to read this. So here goes. Entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A4 to discuss matters relating to the location, expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. Would someone like to make that motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second. All, any discussion? All in favor? We are in closed session. We will be back out in open session once we conclude closed session. Thank you. Okay. So we are back in open session. Anything else to come before us this evening? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Finney, second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.